Aloha and happy Easter Monday to everyone. Welcome to the 3:00 PM hearing of the Committee on Public Safety and Intergovernmental and Military Affairs. Today is April 1st. We're not fooling you. It is April 1st. We welcome our committee members. Chair Wakai, thank you for being with us and a few more might be joining us shortly. For all testifiers, including those on Zoom, we ask that you stand on your written testimony. If your oral testimony is different from your written testimony, the time limit for each testifier will be one minute. The content, including the hearing notice, copies of the bills and testimony can be found on the legislature's website. The live video streaming archive of this hearing can be found on the Senate's YouTube channel. Decision making will occur after we hear from all testifiers. If we have a catastrophic technical failure, we will resume this hearing in this conference room, 225, on Wednesday, April 3rd, 2024 at 3:00 PM. We do have a long agenda on resolutions here today, so we'll begin first with SCR 54 and SR 43. This is directing the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency to submit a grant request to the Federal Emergency Management Agency for rockfall mitigation in Wanalo Gardens and Wanalo Valley, Oahu. Members, we don't have any registered testifiers or anyone in the audience that wishes to testify on these two resolutions. If not, we'll move on to our next set of resolutions. This is SCR 32 and SR 21. Recognizing the issue of illegal dumping within the Waipahu community, urging the state and city and county of Honolulu and military to work together to address this concern. Sign up to testify via Zoom. We have the Department of Health, Environmental Health Administration. May you as anyone from DOH online?
Yes, they are.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair Wakai and Vice Chair Elefante and committee members. The department stands on its written testimony. We are available for any questions. Thanks.
If you can please identify yourself.
My name is Glenn Hi. I'm with the Solen Hazardous Waste Branch of the Department of Health.
Thank you, Glenn. Members, that concludes the list of registered testifiers on those two sets of resolutions. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to testify on SCR 32 or SR 21? If not, we'll move on to our next set of resolutions, SCR 104 and SR 86. For SR 104, this is urging the state and city and county of Honolulu and the United States military to coordinate and address the issue of illegal dumping within the Waipahu and surrounding communities of Evo Pro City and Aia Anauahu. And on SR 104, again from the Department of Health.
Yes, Glenn Hi again from the Department of Health, Solen Hazardous Waste Branch. The department stands on its written testimony. Available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Okay, that completes our registered list of testifiers for those two sets of resolutions. Anyone in the audience that wishes to testify on SCR 104 or SR 86? If not, move on to our next set of resolutions, SCR 70, SR 58. Requesting the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency to install a new emergency siren near the intersection of Amakua Street and Ahuhu Street in Upper Pacific Palisades. With us today, testifying is Larry Vare, Chair of the Pearl City Neighborhood Board. Aloha and welcome.
Aloha. Good afternoon, Chair Wakai and also Vice Chair Elefante and committee members. I'm Larry Vare, Chair of the Pearl City Neighborhood Board, and I'm representing the board as a whole and also the 6,000 residents that live in Pacific Palisades that desperately need this siren. It's been broke for the last few years, and the closest siren for them to even attempt to listen is at Pearl City High School, which is over the ridge. And although that we have, as I saw today when they tested out the sirens, our radio, our TV, our cell phones, those all work, but I am very concerned about our elderly. We have a lot of seniors that live in Pacific Palisades, and they may not be on TV and radio, but they can hear that siren if it was up. And I'm also asking if the funding comes through, that we look at not only that siren and replace it, but bring the latest technology. The Navy has set an example, active shooter. It's all voice commands that come over, and also you have the opportunity, you can put other languages over the thing as well. So that's all I have to say, and I thank you so much, and please make this happen for us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We have Charmaine Duran, Vice Chair of the Pearl City Neighborhood Board in support. That completes our list of registered testifiers for SCR 70 and SR 50. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to testify on these two items? Yes. Angela, you have one minute.
It's the sirens for Palisades.
We're in the fourth set of agenda, sirens for Palisades.
Okay, I will testify in strong favor of the emergency sirens to really help with hazardous emergencies on behalf of Kapalama Neighborhood Security Watch, where we train with the community to enhance safety procedures.
Thank you. That concludes the list of registered testifiers. Anyone else in the audience wishes to testify on SCR 70 and SR 58? If not, members, I forgot to ask questions on the previous sets of resolts. Does anyone have any questions on any of the sets of resolts that we've covered so far? If not, we'll move on to SCR 84, SR 70. This is requesting the Department of Law Enforcement to convene a search and rescue working group to develop and make recommendations to deter hikers from entering illegal hiking trails and to address rising search and rescue costs facing the state and counties due to increased illegal hiking traffic. With us on SCR 84, Jared Redulla from Department of Law Enforcement.
Good afternoon, Chair Wakai, Vice Chair Elefante and members. The Department of Law Enforcement will stand on our written testimony in support of the resolution and engaging in the working group discussions.
Thank you. Ashley Wong in support, Brent Turoka in support, Jennifer Sabas in support. That concludes our list of registered testifiers, including Brent Turoka on SCR and SR 70. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to testify on SCR 84 or SR 70? If not, move on to our next resolution, which is SCR 181, requesting the establishment of a statewide firefighting helicopter program. On our list of registered testifiers, Michael Walker from DLR.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Michael Walker. I serve as the statewide fire protection forester for Department of Land and Natural Resources, Division of Forestry and Wildlife, and we stand on strong support for this measure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walker. Jim Alberts testifying for Hawaiian Electric in support, Glenn Kagamida individual in support. And that concludes all our list of registered testifiers for SCR 181. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to testify on this? Yes.
Angela Melody Young on behalf of Kapalama Neighborhood Security Watch in strong support, requesting there to be support for the statewide firefighting helicopter program. So this is very critically important because we should support safety at all levels, whether it's at the state level or county level, and it really requires collaboration, right? Because the county has the office of the Honolulu Fire Department, and yet we see that this is being requested as a resolution proposal from the state. So it's really good to collaborate and try to help the districts and the communities out so that we can all get very enhanced safety training and hazard response mitigation plans such as firefighting helicopter programs.
Thank you. That concludes. Anyone else? I see we're experiencing some feedback. That's not a siren, yes. Anyone else wishes to testify on SCR 181? Members, any questions? Yes, Chair Wakai.
I like this resolution, but it seems a little constraining because it only talks about helicopters. Resolutions, we can change the title. Could we change that to aircraft? So we can include planes and drones and other airborne vehicles other than the helicopter?
Yes, sir, absolutely. One of the fire council's proposals is to actually not only with the Type 2 helicopters, also include an air boss fixed wing aircraft for coverage of the entire fire to coordinate resources coming in and out of the fire.
Drones as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If the chair, members, any other questions for Mr. Walker or anyone else? Okay, if not, move on to our next set of resolutions, which is SCR 47 and SR 35. This is urging the Department of Law Enforcement to develop and implement a U visa certification policy. First on our list of testifiers is Jared Redulla from DLE.
Good afternoon again, Deputy Director Jared Redulla with the DLE. Our department will stand in support of its written testimony in support of this resolution.
Okay, thank you. Bettina Monk from the Legal Clinic.
Senators, committee members, I'm Bettina Monk, Executive Director of the Legal Clinic. Just quickly, in the year 2000, Congress created the U visa through the Violence Against Women's Act to provide temporary legal status for immigrant victims of crime. I did submit written testimonies. I'll just add to it that often law enforcement have confused, mistaken that this is something where they have to certify a victim of crime themselves for this process, but in fact, it goes through several levels of Department of Homeland Security and USCIS. So it's not something that the law enforcement officers themselves have to make a decision around. And I think, I'm guessing that our law enforcement here does know that, but I just wanted to make that point. And one of the key things about this resolution is that it's allowing time for the counties to develop their own process of training and certification protocols. So it's allowing them one to two years to really, hopefully with community partners like.
Can please summarize?
Yes, come up with the protocol. So it's a powerful tool for law enforcement as well as a very powerful tool for immigrant rights.
Thank you. Dr. Amy Agbeyani, Friends of Hawaii, Friends of Civil Rights.
Aloha, and thank you very much for hearing this resolution. I'm co-chair of the Hawaii Friends for Civil Rights, and we strongly support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Apologize if I mispronounce your last name. It's Omar Vakarano on Zoom.
Yes. Good afternoon, senators, and thank you for hearing this important topic. My name is Omar Vakarano. I'm an immigration attorney with Valor Law LLC. I stand in strong support of this measure, and I've submitted written testimony. And I would just add to that, I wanted to emphasize the importance of this program, which aids law enforcement in the investigation detection of crime. It provides a win-win situation where it provides protection to the immigrant community and at the same time favors the investigation of law enforcement, and it forwards their interests and their ability to detect, investigate and prosecute crimes. But mostly, I would like to make the emphasis that this program protects our immigrant community and benefits the wider community in general, and it would just create a foster a sense of security, and it would help break cycles of violence that usually are resulting from these vulnerable individuals who have no recourse and are often scared to provide testimony because of their status. Yes, so I would just urge that you consider and pass this measure so that the program, U visa program, is more easily implemented at the state level and benefit the same way other states have in the past.
Thank you, Omar. Maria Ralohai.
Hello, chairs, vice chair, and members of the committee. Maria Ralihai with the Hawaii Coalition for Immigrant Rights. Our coalition is basically a statewide coalition of immigrant and migrant-led and serving organizations, some of whom are legal providers working to promote the full inclusion of immigrants and migrants and also their equal justice of immigrants and migrants in Hawaii. And we are in full support of SR 35 and SCR 47. Immigrants and migrants are particularly vulnerable to becoming victims of crimes due to various reasons. And according to recent estimates, there are 50,000 undocumented immigrants in our state alone, comprising many of our agriculture and service industry workers. Undocumented immigrants already face daunting challenges, and adding the fear of their status can make seeking help or even reporting their crimes even more intimidating. So thank you for allowing me to testify.
Thank you, Maria. Corey Park in support, Miley Heroda in support, Narabel Chardon. If you could, please come forward. Aloha and welcome.
Aloha. My name is Narabel Chardon, and I am an immigration attorney serving the Hawaii residents. And I am in support of this bill because we are not here approving U visas. We are not here creating anything that hasn't been created already. What we are here is advocating for the establishment of a procedure that will elicit law enforcement officers to better understand what the certification is. And the certification is just that, a signature certifying that somebody has been the victim of a crime in the United States, and that they may be helpful. So an investigation is not necessary. Prosecution is not necessary. None of that is necessary. So if we can enlighten and we can be a resource, that's what we're advocating here for. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Narabel, that concludes our list of testifiers for SCR 47. Other than Kristina Crystal Kiona in support for SR 35. Anyone else wishes to testify on SCR 47 or SR 35? If not, members, questions? Now move on to our next set of resolutions, SCR 224, SR 200. Requesting the Federal Emergency Management Agency to further assist Maui wildfire victims by amending its requirements under the Direct Lease Program to require that properties qualifying for the program and used by Lahaina residents as temporary housing be within 20 miles of Lahaina rather than within 40 miles. Within 40 miles. We don't have anyone registered to testify on these two measures. Anyone in the audience that wishes to testify on these two measures? If not, move on to our next set of resolution. Oh, yes, Ms. Young. Sorry, I missed you there. We're on 224 and 200. Okay, anyone else? Okay, if not, move on to our next set of resolutions, SCR 219 and SR 195. This is urging the Federal Emergency Management Agency to expedite the placement of Maui wildfire survivors into the federal direct lease program. We don't have any registered testifiers on these two resolutions. Anyone in the audience around Zoom that wishes to testify on this? Yes, Angela.
Aloha, Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of Kapalama Neighborhood Security Watch in strong support. So this resolution is a request to expedite the HAIMA emergency response to effectuate a priority of the federal, county and state. So we should be in strong support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to testify on those two resolutions? If not, members, questions? Go to our next set of resolutions, which is SCR 156 and SR 133, urging Congress to take immediate and decisive action to support middle and lower income households in America. On our list of testifiers, we have Michael Golichuch Jr. from Stonewall Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii in support. That concludes our list of registered testifiers. Anyone else for SCR 156 and SR 133? Yes, Angela?
So Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of CARES in strong support of Senate concurrent resolution 156, urging Congress to take immediate and decisive action to support the middle and lower income households in America. So there is a crisis of inequality, of economic hardship, and this puts an extreme disadvantage upon racially diverse and ethnic minority groups and the marginalized and the stigmatized culture groups. And COVID-19 has exacerbated this disparity with disproportionate effects upon the community suffering from wealth and income disparity. And the barrier for lower social classes is always a lack of resources. And this can be potentially attributed to institutional bias. Institutional bias is a pattern for procedures and practices of institutions to operate in a way which results in marginalized social groups being disadvantaged while bias favors privileged and elite social classes. So we should really get Congress to take immediate action. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else that wishes to testify on SCR 156 and SR 133? If not, move on to our last set of resolutions, which is SCR 31, SR 20, requesting the Women's Corrections Implementation Commission to develop a strategy and make recommendations to reduce the number of women incarcerated by the Women's Community Correctional Center by 25% over the next five years. First up on our testifier lists is we have former Governor Lingal. Aloha, welcome.
Aloha, Chair Wakai and Vice Chair Elefante, members of the committee. The importance of this particular resolution is that it sets a measurable goal. Anytime the legislature wants to achieve something, we set a goal. It's 100% energy independence, or it's 30% of food in the schools be locally grown. Without setting that, we just have an aspiration. Yes, we want to move to a rehabilitative model, but progress isn't there, we feel, partly because there's no measurable goal. This asks the Implementation Commission to develop a strategy and come to you with recommendations next year on how to reduce that population by 25% over the next five years. And I want to thank, I see the directors here, Director Johnson and Judge Morikawa, the women's court both worked with us on this because I wanted 50%, but we'll go 25%. I can't help myself, but we really appreciate it because they had very significant, important input in this. But I ask you to approve these resolutions. Thanks again for putting it on the agenda.
Thank you, Governor. Trish Morikawa testifying for the Judiciary State of Hawaii in support. Tommy Johnson, Director of Corrections. Thank you, Director. Tadia Rice testifying for Beyond Bars Reentry Program.
Good afternoon. It's a privilege to be amongst you. Thank you very much. I'm here to support and testify and ask you to support SCR 31 because I was at the women's prison for 10 years doing volunteer training, and I saw the trajectory that women faced upon release. While in was bad enough, but upon release was even more difficult. So I urge you to please consider this very seriously and support it. We have all of these citizens sitting in our prisons that could be productive, that could be contributing to making our state and our cities more effective, and they need jobs. They need housing. They don't get those when they come out. So I'm trying to plug that hole a bit, and I'm a very proud member of the Women's Prison Project, and I am doing all I can on the reentry side now as well as still training in the federal detention center. So I thank you very much, and I urge you to support SCR 31. Mahalo nui.
Thank you. If you could just state your name for the record, please.
Tadia Rice.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Lauren Walker testifying for Hawaii Friends of Restorative Justice in support on Zoom.
They're unavailable on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Nadia Alawee testifying for a women's prison project in support. And then Linda Rich.
Aloha, Senator Wakai, Senator Elefante, members of the committee. I am also a member of the Women's Prison Project, and I'm on the Women's Corrections Implementation Commission. But I'm really testifying as a mental health and substance abuse professional who has watched for so many years women rotating, cycling in and out of prison. I believe so firmly that in the importance of this resolution, you believe in rehabilitation also. You changed the name of the department. We know what needs to happen, that there need to be other options for women and other treatment available besides incarceration. And I believe that the Women's Corrections Implementation Commission is uniquely positioned to be able to recommend appropriate changes. So thank you for your time, and I urge you to support this resolution.
Thank you. That completes the list of our registered testifiers for SCR 31 and SR 20. Anyone in the audience that wishes to testify on these two resolutions? Yes, please come forward, Angela.
Angela Melody Young testifying in strong support of Kapalama Neighborhood Security Watch. So policy for the correction systems should be created with a goal to provide equity to those who have offended and for those in society who are likely to offend. And the purpose of good policies should be to address the disadvantage and disproportionate effects on marginalized groups, especially women. And there should be policies designed to balance the institutional bias, which results in discrimination and prejudice. And so the marginalized and stigmatized are forever in a cycle of incarceration and recidivism. So the solution perhaps is let's halt, stop this practice of institutional bias with policies and then focus on providing healthcare resources, classes and trainings, right? There are already churches and nonprofits that are already providing programs to women and youths from renters that have gone through incarceration.
Anyone else that wishes to testify on these two resolutions? If not, members, questions? If not, short recess. Aloha, and we are reconvening the Committee on Public Safety, Intergovernmental and Military Affairs. This is the 3:00 PM agenda. First up on our agenda, this is we're going to now go into decision making. Thank you for being patient. For the first set of resolutions, SCR 54 and SR 43, directing the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency to submit a grant request to the Federal Emergency Management Agency for rockfall mitigation in Wanalo Gardens and Wanalo Valley. Recommendation is to pass with tech amendments. Any further discussion, questions or concerns? If not, Chair, your vice chair votes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes?
Aye.
Senator Awah, please excuse. Chair, your recommendations for both resolutions are adopted.
Thank you, Chair. Next set of resolutions is SCR 32 and SR 21, recognizing the issue of illegal dumping within the Waipahu community and urging the state and city and county of Honolulu and military to work together to address this concern. Chair's, my recommendation is to pass as is. Any further discussion, questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair votes aye.
The members present, any opposition or reservations? Having seen and heard non-shared recommendations, adopted.
Okay, thank you. Next set of resolutions is SCR 104 and SR 86, urging the state and city and county of Honolulu and the United States military to coordinate and address the issue of illegal dumping within the Waipahu and surrounding communities of Evo Pro City and Aia Anauahu. Recommendation is to pass with tech amendments. Any questions, concerns or comments? If not, Vice Chair votes aye.
Of the members present, any opposition or reservations? Having seen and heard non-shared recommendations, adopted.
Okay, thank you, Chair. The next set of resolutions is SCR 70, SR 58, requesting the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency to install a new emergency siren near the intersection of Amakua Street and Ahuhu Street in Upper Pacific Palisades. We're going to recommend that we pass with tech amendments and adding the words as quote, as a top priority on line 25 after the words Pacific Palisades. Any further discussion, questions, comments or concerns? Okay, if not, Vice Chair votes aye with amendments.
Of the members present, any opposition or reservations? Having seen and heard non-shared recommendations, adopted.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Next set of resolutions is SCR 84 and SR 70, requesting the Department of Law Enforcement to convene a search and rescue working group to develop and make recommendations to deter hikers from entering illegal hiking trails and to address the rising search and rescue costs facing the state and counties due to increased illegal hiking traffic. Chair's recommendation is to pass with tech amendments. Any questions, comments or concerns? If not, Vice Chair votes aye.
For the members present, any opposition or reservations? Having seen and heard non-shared, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Next resolution is SCR 181. This is requesting the establishment of a statewide firefighting helicopter program. We're going to add in other types of aircraft in there, such as fixed wing and drones. Can add that to the title and then throughout the resolution, any tech amendments? With that, any questions, comments or concerns? Okay, if not, Chair, Vice Chair votes aye with amendments.
Of the members present, any opposition or reservations? Having seen and heard non-shared, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you so much, Chair. Next set of resolutions is SCR 47 and SR 35. This is urging the Department of Law Enforcement to develop and implement a U visa certification. This is urging the Department of Law Enforcement to develop and implement a U visa certification policy. Chair's recommendation is to pass unamended. Any questions, comments, or concerns? If not, vice chair votes aye.
If the members present any opposition or reservations, having seen and heard non-shared, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you so much, Chair. Next set of resolutions is SCR two-two-four and SR two-hundred, requesting the Federal Emergency Management Agency to further assist Maui wildfire victims by amending its requirements under the direct lease program to require that properties qualifying for the program and used by Lahaina residents as a temporary housing will be within twenty miles of Lahaina rather than within forty miles. We did not receive any written testimony or oral testimony on this, so recommendation is to defer on both measures. Okay, which leads us to our next set of resolutions is SCR two-nineteen and SR one-nine, SR one-nine-five, urging the Federal Emergency Management Agency to expedite the placement of Maui wildfire survivors into the federal direct lease program. On this, recommendations to pass with tech amendments. Any questions, comments, or concerns? If not, vice chair votes aye.
If the members present any opposition or reservations, having seen and heard non-shared, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Next set of resolutions is SCR one-five-six and SR one-three-three, urging Congress to take immediate and decisive action to support middle and lower-income households in America. Recommendation here is to pass with technical amendments. Any further discussion, comments, questions, or concerns? If not, vice chair votes aye with amendments.
If the members present any opposition or reservations to the Chair's recommendation, having seen and heard non-shared, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, Chair. And our last set of resolutions is SCR thirty-one and SR twenty, requesting the Women's Correctional Corrections Implementation Commission to develop a strategy and make recommendations to reduce the number of women incarcerated at the Women's Community Correctional Center by twenty-five percent over the next five years. Recommendation here is to pass with tech amendments. Any comments, questions, or concerns? If not, vice chair votes aye.
If the members present any opposition or reservations to the Chair's recommendation, having seen and heard non-shared, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. This concludes our three P M agenda. We are adjourned. Aloha and great afternoon, everyone. Will the Joint Committees on Public Safety and Intergovernmental Military Affairs and Committee on Hawaiian Affairs please come to order? This is for the Monday, April first, two thousand twenty-four, three fifteen agenda. We have some few announcements. We welcome all our committee members, those in the room, as well as those joining us on Zoom. For all testifiers, including those, one minute? The one minute, right? Yeah, one minute. For all testifiers on Zoom, we ask that you stand on your written testimony. If your oral testimony is different from your written testimony, time limit for each testifier will be one minute. The content, including the hearing notice, copies of the bills, and testimony can be found on the legislator's website. Live video stream and archive of this hearing can be found on the Senate's YouTube channel. Decision-making will occur after we hear from all testifiers. If we have a technical failure, we'll resume the hearing in this conference room on Wednesday, April third, two thousand twenty-four, at three oh one P M. With that, our two items on the agenda for today is SCR two oh nine and SR one eighty-five, requesting all branches of the United States military to display the Hawaiian flag on all United States military reservations and military training facilities in the state. On our list of registered testifiers for SCR two oh nine from the Hawaii Military Affairs Council in support, Ellen Awai, individual in support, Jaclyn Ambrose in support, and for SR one eighty-five, Hawaii Military Affairs Council in support. That concludes our list of registered testifiers for SCR two oh nine and SR one eighty-five. Anyone else in the audience or on Zoom that wishes to testify on these two issues? Two resolutions, as you say. Okay, if not, short recess. We're convening the Joint Committee hearings on Public Safety, Intergovernmental Military Affairs, and Hawaiian Affairs. The co-chairs have conferred a recommendation here for SCR two oh nine and SR one eighty-five, which is requesting all branches of the United States military to display the Hawaiian flag on all United States military reservations and military training facilities in the state. We're going to pass with the following amendment, stating that the United States military reservation and military training facility may display the Hawaii state flag rather than shall, and any other tech amendments. Okay, with that, any further discussion?
No.
If not, recommendation for PSM on SCR two oh nine and SR one eighty-five with amendments, vice chair votes aye, Chair.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes?
Aye.
Senator Awah is excused. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
And same recommendations for Hawaiian Affairs Committee?
I'll take the vote.
Okay, Chair, take the vote, please.
Yes, okay, Chair Shima Bukuro is an aye. Vice Chair Favella?
Aye.
Senator Ihara? Senator Kyo Ho Kaloli?
Aye.
Senator Richards?
Aye.
All right, measure passes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. This concludes our joint committee hearings. We are adjourned.